We can assign anything we want to.
Okay, clerk will call the meeting to order, or the work session to order at 1:06 PM. Okay, the roll call is the board is here, minus the supervisor. Staff president is manager Gerard, superintendent of public works, Paige is here. And accountant Lois Stonehouse is here. Any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, so we move right into the budget discussion on public works, and I'll turn that over to the manager.
And I'm going to turn it over to Kirk, since we're starting basically with the, I'm assuming the water budget is where you want to start?
Question. How can we start a public works department budget consideration if we have not considered the capital improvement projects?
Well, I think you just discuss it. Because the capital improvements projects are going to be, well, they're part of the budget, but they are, we're just preliminary discussion. I mean, because if you take one out, it's going to affect the budget, correct?
One would help. I just, I mean, there's so, I mean, there's a lot of capital improvement items that are in the budget. So it makes a big difference in the budget presentation if you have some or if you don't have some, it changes a lot of them. And I'm just wondering at what point in this whole thing do we intend to address the capital improvement projects?
I would hope, I would hope soon.
Because we can't, I mean, if you approve a budget and they're in there, then you've approved all the capital improvement projects.
Yeah. I would hope you would discuss it soon, and I think a lot of the CIP is, a lot of the capital improvements is driven by the master plan, correct?
Most of them appear to be driven by the study that was done in 2003 and updated again in 2009 or something.
Well, I was under the impression a lot of this was master plan stuff, like the board approved a long time ago. And of course, that's, that's going to be updated too, but...
Well, I, I think the board approved it a long time ago, it's based on that study that was done in 2003. Most of which that study from, as near as I can figure out, was shelved, when we shelved phase two of the water project.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure how much of that left we're going to do just because it's in the study, or we're going to do because it's needed or required.
Well, looking at the water budget, other than the, there isn't much really increase there. There's a 10 set recommended volume increase per 1,000 gallons, and there's a monthly equivalent meter recommended increase also, but other than that, there isn't an increase there in the water budget that's very significant. I would say the wastewater budget is the, is the issue, or the area where the major increases are, that we need to find out where that's coming from, in my opinion.
In the water.
I'm looking at the narrative now.
Yep, as of I. In the work, narrative under the replacement improvement, page 51.
What page?
Page 91. That's the end of the narrative, last page.
Which page, you should have, do you have a page on that, or?
No.
591.
No, that's, I'm, I'm using my old one, because there's no difference, and that's the one I got marked up.
Yeah, in the book, it's 591-6.
Okay.
The annual system replacement expense is 222,620, and the improvements cost are The improvement cost is certainly capital improvement, I'm guessing, but as you go down through there, the things that are included in that by this explanation is the backup generator for the Cox tank, the motor control center, PLC upgrade, Brookton Road Water Main Extension, Mason's Bluff Well Field and Pumping Station, and the annualized cost of the short and long-term improvements are $320,593. That is the capital improvement program, isn't it?
It is, except for Mason's Bluff. That was just, I didn't delete that part. And actually, the revised CIP was included in the packet that was emailed to you. So we can discuss it if you have that, if you might bring that out.
What are you talking about?
That would have been the one, the last, last one that I sent out to you all purpose of review. The CIP?
Yep, I've got that one.
Okay. So that, that was revised. I guess two things, you know, from a staff standpoint, I know the CIP was discussed at the, at the last work session, and the decision was to go forward with the budget process, and really didn't address the capital improvement, and so that's basically what we prepared for today. With regard to the, the water project that was shelved, we are not budgeting for that. That's, we're not doing anything on that, and as I say, first, we're supposed to remove that out of there. The narrative did not remove the language, but I don't believe those costs are...
I, I understand what you're saying, but in the, within the budget that we have in front of us, there's $98,333 of that, that is capital improvement projects for this year.
Correct.
There's also, and if you're looking at the wastewater, there's 150,3250, that's in this year. So my comment remains, how can we discuss a budget and come to a consensus if we haven't looked at the capital improvement projects and come to a consensus on that first?
Well, actually, you've got three, you know, underwater, you've got three projects that are identified in the budget, one that starts in '21. The Brookton project is not scheduled until started to fund in '21. But you've got the motor control center, the ATS generator for Cox, and the PLC upgrade, which is the water system, starting in 2019. So, yep, that's the 98,333.
Right. And those three are actually going to be partially funded this year, or in 2019, proposed.
Correct, in the proposal, yes. Be full, full funding on one, and partial funding on the other two. You've also revised the cost of the generator based on the more recent estimates. It was actually part of the 2017 DWR project. Did that reduce from $100,000 to $60,000, correct?
And then we, we, some of these things that we have been putting money away from already that we used for the Vanden Boom, South Vanden Boom project, I'm wondering how that gets reconciled with this whole CIP request?
Well, stuff that's done, it's not in. So there's no longer any funding because it's very people.
Well, I understand that, but number four underwater is the ATS, the generator, $60,000.
Yep.
And we've already put money away for the generator in the past years, haven't we?
We have, that's correct.
Okay, but that money's gone.
It is.
Some of it is gone.
Pardon?
Some of it is gone, yes, correct.
That's my, that's my point. If there's some of that left, and the cost of this generator is $60,000, then why don't we subtract what's left from the $60,000, and why aren't we collecting our capital improvements project show something less than $60,000? I mean, I can see why the capital improvement project on that page of the CIP request has $60,000. But if $60,000 is the determined amount, and we already have some of that money left, then why are we budgeting $60,000 in this year's budget to collect for that? Because we already have some of it left, so if we have $10 left, why aren't we collecting $59,990 this year instead of $60,000?
Well, that's correct, we could do that, but we just sent Lois, or not Lois, Lynn, that information just actually this afternoon, so I don't know if she's had a chance to look at it. But as a water fund, there's not, there's not that much left, a number. Lois, do you recall what the number is? It's $200,000 some thousand dollars right now, unrestricted cash.
Unrestricted retained earnings.
Has that been broken out as far as which one of these CIPs that applied, they apply to?
I, I would give you the full number, but I certainly wouldn't have a break on it. That's not something I would decide.
Is that the one we're working on? Yes. And she's working on it right now.
I, I guess that's my question, is, is, there's a lot of dollars that are floating around here that we don't really have a clear grasp on what they're being used for, and that is just wanting, one of many examples here, the $60,000 on item number four in the wastewater, or the water fund, for that generator, if there's anything left on that, we should not be putting it in the budget again for $60,000. We should be putting it in for the balance of what needs to be gathered for that. So those, that's why I'm wondering, until the CIP stuff is reconciled with reality, and all of this stuff is affecting the budget, a couple hundred thousand dollars one way or the other, then why aren't we resolving that first, and then working on the budget? Because the budget will definitely be impacted. If you pull a number of items out of there in the CIP requests, it's going to impact the budget that we're going to sit here today and get a consensus on. I don't know how we can do that.
Well, I'm looking at our CIP, there's three things that Kirk is funding this year. And I think they're all needed, I don't think they're all done yet.
Well, and I'm not questioning the need, I'm questioning the fact that we were just told by the superintendent that there is still money left in that generator fund that was collected for it, and if there's money left in that, then why are we collecting the whole thing in the budget this year?
It's not there.
What is that figure?
Don't know.
There was another.
And that's the question.
Can Kirk tell us what that figure is?
No.
Oh, this is wastewater.
Why? It's been there for a while, hasn't it?
So that's my question.
Why don't we have that figure?
Okay, here we go, the most recent number for unrestricted retained earnings is $115,000 in the water fund. So even though we will have, we have collected enough money for the generator, over time, over a period of years, that was used for other projects that have been completed, that cost a lot more than the $60,000.
I can understand that, but shouldn't those be earmarked where they went?
Yes, and that's what we've been trying to put together. This just went to wind today, and earlier today, trying to get to where that is. Well, actually, that, that is, that's probably in here somewhere, could that be on the, is a sheet in here for the replacement fund?
So back to my original question, how can we do a budget if we don't have CIPs?
Not the CIP, the number.
If we haven't looked at and approved the CIP requests, how can we do a budget? Because in the water alone, there's three CIPs that are in there that are affecting that budget to the $298,000.
Well, I think, so maybe, maybe this is the time to look at those, I guess, and we'll move forward. I think they're all needed, so I, I don't think that they're not needed.
I question, I question some of those.
Nobody's saying that they're not needed, but we still have to have the figures.
Yeah. So if you approve those, then I guess you got to get the numbers for those, and then move forward.
And we thought we were going to have those numbers today.
My, my question on this, just the financial portion of my question on the CIPs is, how much money have we collected, and how much money do we need to collect in 2019 to fund that CIP? And according to the superintendent, there are some balances left over, it's just a matter of, we don't know where the, that, where those balances are applied, with CIPs, those, and there's some $200,000. We just don't know which one of these projects they get applied to. But it makes a difference, because if there's some that it's applying to, Brookton Water Main, and, or the PLC upgrade, that, I'm sorry, the Brookton Water Main and the water that we're not collect, that we're not collecting for, if some of that $200,000 some thousand dollars applies to that, then there should be some left over that should automatically be applied to the motor control center, the generator, and the PLC update. So they shouldn't be, the total CIP request should not be there. The $60,000 should not be there. It should be something less, if there's a portion of it that's already been collected and not spent. Now, I don't have a particular problem with, with the, with the generator, I have a problem with the amount, because we don't know what was collected before.
Well, and, and I think what happened in the past was, if I'm, if I'm mistaken, someone can correct me, but we did have things earmarked and funded, but we decided to go with the Vanden Boom project, and we spent a lot of that money down, and we, I don't know if it was tracked, how much was taken out of each item for earmark, you know, for that was earmarked for each item. And by doing that, we spent our reserve down by doing that project, and that's where we ended up in some trouble with some of these funds, by we doing that project for cash, so...
And if, if there was, none of those funds were left, they were all spent on South Vanden Boom, then you're starting over, I mean, you...
That's where you...
That's a separate issue, but you're starting over, but it appears that there are some of those funds left. I'm just wondering where they're applied to.
Well, yeah, and that's a question for...
Well, the South Vanden Boom water project was $400,000 that we paid for in cash, in real money. And that was a project that I had not been funding for years, okay? So in other words, I did not have $400,000 earmarked for South Vanden Boom. And one thing, I, I can't tell off the year, Lois, these are applied for each, for each project.
No, I don't have that, because I don't decide which project has retained.
You just have the total fund.
Right, yeah, I, I don't have the knowledge or...
Is that total?
I'm just talking about the year at the time, when did we spend the $400,000 of the cost?
When we spent those?
Yes.
I would have to check on that.
Because that's not...
I don't have the exact date.
It's on the spreadsheet, but I'm not clear if it is. I think it was 2017, but...
It would have been 2017.
It doesn't say so on this spreadsheet. It would have been 2017, because that's where we're going to get discussions here at the board, about the dangers of doing that project work, and that's what we're facing, basically, where it amounts to, you know, and answer your question, trust me, again. No, there was not a specific track where there was a, there was a line item for an ATS generator, or a motor control system, or whatever, there was a lump sum of unretained earnings, of retained earnings, basically, that's what got the fees, and what we're dealing with now, and I hope pretty soon there's an answer to what we've been doing with the CIP program, because it's been going all over the place, and we don't know where we're at with it, quite honestly, as staff. But as it sits right now, we've got $115,740, you know, unrestricted retained earnings, that can be put towards the projects, and to answer your question, yes, in my opinion, we are starting over at zero. That's as clean as I can be about it, because I can't get an answer on what's going on with CIP or anything else, so we're going ahead with the budget like we were told to at the last session.
And I guess, other than, than taking a look at the CIPs for their individually, that is where my question is, if there's $115,740 in that overall fund, that must be earmarked for specific projects, but there's not an indication what projects those are earmarked for, and if a portion of that would be earmarked for the generator, then there shouldn't be $60,000 in the budget for the generator for 2019.
Unless we want to buy the generator in 2019.
Well, that appears what we're doing, because the original CIP had that broke out over two years, $30,000 each year, and now it's $60,000 in one year.
Correct. And I agree with Randy's assessment, I mean, basically, CIP wise, we're essentially starting over. Yeah, and that, that was in 2016 and 17, that was my concern, when we were having the discussions with the engineers about the Vanden Boom project, I did not believe we should have gone forward with it without outside funding. But the decision was to go forward and pay for it, not retain earnings, which is what happened, so everything got spent. That had been earmarked or anticipated for these other projects, got spent on that project.
And, and I'm just saying that we can't be starting over, because it's $115,000 in there.
Well, correct. But that's the total unrestricted... That was, that was the end of 2017, so I don't know today's number, but... Yeah, but remember, the direction that the board gave, and it wasn't necessarily this board, but the direction we were given is three months of reserve operating for public works. So we have to have unrestricted retained earnings, as I decide, to continue operations in case we shut down the state government, or the federal government, or whatever. I have to have four months of reserve in the general fund, the board designated three months of reserves for public works.
I, I understand that part of it, but...
But that's the unrestricted retained earnings, that's where that's at.
And that isn't a lot of money for a water fund, that is not a lot of money.
I under, that, so that's got, my original question was, is how much money is sitting there for these CIPs that had already been correct, collected, and it's not the $115,000 then?
No. Correct.
The previous CIPs were spent, I think, it's gone.
So we assume of that, that all of the CIPs that are, that are submitted are at zero today?
Yes.
I, I would have to say that that would be my position, because I don't see any other way to, to do it. We're in the process of trying to get to design something that will give you a multi-year count, basically, which we've been trying to, the last year or two, trying to figure out how that's going to be put together to identify a specific motor control center, funding it over five years, 2019, this much being put into, 2019, this much, and if you take any of it out on any other project, it shows a negative. That's where we're trying to get to, but as I say, we, Kirk has been working with the supervisors, and I can't answer that question for you, because I don't know where that's at.
And also, too, it's very hard to track, if you took that money and, and we didn't, we spent it, and so my assessment is correct, as the manager's, I think you're starting back at zero, and moving forward from this point forward, that's where we're going to deal with, we're going to deal with a better tracking system than what we're doing now.
I don't, I'm not saying doing the Vanden Boom project when we did it in conjunction with another project who was going on with a bad idea, but this is the result of it. We, we expended reserve funds that we had set aside or intended, I won't say set aside, we had intended it to be used on other projects, those projects are now unfunded.
And then it came along the winter, that we had a bad winter, and manager and the superintendent of public works felt that we should have more money also in that reserve fund in case we have some water freeze-ups, especially because if you have a water freeze-up and it's a block, it's a million dollars to do with that block, or more.
So how do we move forward? Do we look at the CIPs first, and the budget second, or we look at the budget first?
Well, I think you look at your CIPs, because that's what you suggested.
Well, I'm, I'm as frustrated with this whole process as anybody is with regard to the CIP, because it has not gone as it was intended to go, or it was designed to go. And where we're at right now is a situation where we, we have, we have a budget that includes the items that were requested in the CIP, and we've not had a decision from the board as to whether those projects are to be funded or not. So I think the point we're at now is determining what, if any, of those CIP projects are going to be funded in 2019, which will then impact the budget.
And it's going to require some review of the estimates that were given. I'm sure that the generator amount that's been put into the CIP area of the budget is no longer accurate. It can't be. It, it was an estimate at the time, but if you want to really get down to the fine hair on this thing, you're going to have to get a new review of those things that are in the CIP budget, and that may or may not be needed. If you have, if you're, if the, if the excess that we're talking about now would accommodate any expense number that was given years ago, that, it would accommodate that. But, but if you, if you're going to get down to the, the fine hair on this thing, you're going to have to get a better estimate of each one of those, and I'm not sure that's needed.
Now, the original, the original estimate was, is supervisor, or as trustee, Wigan had stated, and others have stated, basically was predicated upon the original 2003 study that was updated then in 2007, I believe it was ultimately accepted by the board in 2009. That pegged the price of that generator installed at $100,000, because that was the history. What Kirk is saying now, is what he's got here at the $60,000 estimated cost, is a generator that's equivalent to what we have at our lift stations, so we know what that cost was. And, you know, the, the generator, basically, as Kirk had mentioned in, or explained in our prior meetings, several, several meetings ago, is intended primarily to be able to keep the Northwoods tank filled for a fire flow, which we do not have the capability of doing at the current time, without this generator, without the generator. And that's, to me, what makes the generator important. The PLC upgrade, I'll tell you, our PLC just failed, you're going to be seeing a lot of overtime in the next pay period, because we've got 24/7 staff watching the PLC now, till they can get here to work on it, which will be next Tuesday, Monday?
Tuesday.
Next Monday, if the earliest that the technicians can get here to fix it, it failed. So we're manually operating the system now, as opposed to the computers, computerized.
Well, how about if we do this? How about if we look at the three items in the water, the three CIP requests in the water fund that we intend to budget for this year, and we look at the three items in the wastewater fund that we intend to budget for this year? And consider those, and then work on the other ones after budget.
I think that's reasonable. And, and again, you know, that, the board members, you know, will, I think it would be valuable to have the discussion about those items, to get a better explanation of what they are, and then the board can decide if you're going to fund those in 19 or not fund them in 19, and then the budget can be easily amended for that.
From, from my perspective, unless somebody else got problems with anything, I don't have any, underwater fund, I don't have any problem with the generator, and I don't have any problem with the PLC upgrades, but I do have a lot of questions about the motor control center. But I do have a lot of questions about the motor control center. The only justification under the motor control center is that the motor control center was originally installed in 1972 and does not meet current codes. I understand that. Anything that was built in 1972 does not meet current codes. That doesn't mean in and of itself that it's time to replace anything. There's nothing in there that says it's a public safety hazard, it's an employee safety hazard. I'm wondering, are we just upgrading it to meet the current codes? Or is there another reason that we're upgrading it?
Well, I guess, I guess that would depend on what the code, you know, what the codes require, you know, but I'm sure Kirk can answer that. I can't because I'm not sure. But I know that the, those, that system was installed when we put the, I think that's, is that the one, this house at Cogstank? Cogstank pump station?
Yes.
Okay. So that's been there for a while.
You know, when we're talking about...
And I'm not sure what code we're talking about there, so Kirk may even have to address that.
What, what, the kind of electrical code?
Just the electrical code.
That didn't change.
And the, yeah, the electric code's changed since 1972 certainly.
Oh, seventy-two.
The, the problem I have is, is there's probably eighty percent of the structures in this township that don't meet the current electrical code.
Yeah, but this isn't any structure in the township. This is the water supply for Marquette Township.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what's so critical about it is, okay, if we have a problem at all, if we have
can't use the wells, okay, first of all, it's a backup for the wells. Okay? So, you know, we've got, if we got antiquated equipment, so even these PLCs that just need upgrading, okay, we got PLCs, okay? They're controlling and monitoring old equipment, okay, which is not run now because the original purpose was to fill the Northwoods tank.
Well, but we're already past the, the PLCs and nobody had a problem with that. We're talking about the motor control center upgrade, and I'm just wondering why are we, the only justification you got in this CIP is that it's being upgraded because it doesn't meet the current codes. That doesn't say that it is dangerous, that doesn't say that it's not doing its job, that just says it doesn't meet the current codes, which you would expect it doesn't meet the current codes. It's been there since 1972.
All right, so what the, so what the board needs to see basically is what code is it not compliant with and what's the potential for not, not upgrading?
Are, are there industry standards for replacement?
Well, it's got to be designed to, you know, for whatever it is, your, your...
But, you know, I think what you're, what we're running into is we're running to the DEQ requirements for reliability of a municipal well, you know, water system. And I think we should be able to document that pretty easily.
Well, my, I guess the problem I have is if you're only talking about the electrical system, it's meters and circuit breakers and they either, what about them, are they not supplying sufficient power to the things they're supposed to power? Or is the circuit breakers reached a level of unreliability that we're having problems with them? Or, I mean, has been anything demonstrated that suggests that it's time to upgrade because you can't just upgrade because it doesn't meet the current codes?
Right. But it was identified, again, I could go back to this, but we, this is why we do these studies. What the studies do is they look at the reliability of the system, they look at deficiencies, they look at bottlenecks, they look at issues, they look at problems. Okay? And that was identified as a short-term improvement, and that was, you know, twenty years ago.
The reliability study mentions the same thing that you mentioned here, that it doesn't meet the current codes and needs to be upgraded. It doesn't say why. It just seems to me that we're spending money just to bring it up to the latest and greatest without any really justification as to why it needs to be the latest and greatest. And it's, we're doing it at a cost of, geez, what is the total?
Overall?
Eighty-five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Over three years.
But we're going to do it at twenty-eight thousand and change for this year?
Well, there's probably, we'll get the documentation for you, but it's probably a combination of two things, probably a combination of your own ordinance that requires us to keep the system maintained in an operational capability. That's our township ordinance, but there's also DEQ requirements with regard to the public water system. So we can pull that information together for a relatively quick, that's not a, I don't think that's going to be a difficult thing to do, and it probably should, should have been included here as the rationale as to why it's necessary, not just that it's time to comply with the codes, but what does that mean?
Yeah, I mean, if there's something additional to this that says we don't meet a current DEQ requirement, fine. And if there's something in here that says it, it doesn't meet some safety standard, some reliability standard, fine. Those are reasons to upgrade, but just because it doesn't meet the code is not reasonable.
My expectation is it's probably got more to do with licensing to municipal, municipal water supply and anything else, but we will get that for you. You'll have that before your next meeting.
Okay. Well, we're back to reliability and safety again, which is, you know, we'll put it in there.
Yeah, but let's expand why, I mean, we can expand on that, you know, what, why is it, why is it a reliability issue? What codes are we in violation of? What requirements do we have as a public water supply system?
If old does not, means that you're not reliable and safe, we're all in trouble. There's got to be more to it than that. A little narrative is a long way.
Yeah, and realistically, the PLC, that, that system did fail, Monday? Monday, I don't know if it was, I became aware of it on Monday that it had failed, and we do have water operators now that are twenty-four, seven, kind of babysitting the system to make sure that transfers and movements from tank to tank are occurring as they're supposed to, keeping levels. So we have fire flow. So we expect to see overtime on the next payroll.
What exactly do they have to do to maintain that?
Physically be there and actually physically make the changes as opposed to the other system.
Watch their, their panels and make the changes?
Watching the panels, respond, responding to alarms, responding to indications of low levels, the variety.
You can't watch it remotely because that's part of...
It's got to be physical.
So there's no alarm.
You're a babysitter.
So they're babysitting the pump stations and the tanks.
It's not like being there twenty-four, seven, but we got to make sure that the tank is filling when these fill, it doesn't overfill, you know, doesn't get too low.
Once the tank is full, how long does it generally take before it's down to a level that they have to fill it again?
As though the demand, yeah, it's, it's always depending on the demand. I mean, when it's weather like this, probably not as, as volatile of changes, but if it was ninety degrees out and people watering the lawns and, you know, filling pools and doing those kinds of things, it's, it's much more volatile. Right now, it's probably a little more steady, but periodically, they still have to visit each of the sites, check the settings to make sure that they're functioning as they're supposed to be functioning, and actually to do physical transfers from tank to tank.
Yeah, the city, they lost, for example, they lost communication, and this isn't only in the water side, it can happen in your wastewater side, too, where your lift stations lose communication. They had to send one, every, they had to send someone out every hour to look at that because if it overflows, you're going to manage a problem and a big fine.
Now, that doesn't mean that that wouldn't happen with an upgraded system, but it's more likely with our system and it's becoming more...
Well, our old system's over ten...
More regular, I guess.
How old is our system? It's over ten years old now, right?
PLC system?
Well, the Northwoods was just nineties.
Well, that's really old.
Well, and I don't think, I think we have a consensus on the generator and the PLC updates and upgrades, don't we?
Yeah, it's just, I just want to bring your attention that, you know, that's happening right now, we're, we're seeing, seeing that, so.
So it looks like we need to get a little bit more information on the motor control center.
Motor control system. Yeah, and we can pull that pretty quickly.
And the justification of the DEQ requirements or rationale.
I think you're going to see it in two places, probably against, well, maybe even three. You're going to see it in ordinance, you're going to see it in probably DEQ requirements and the licensing requirements for your municipal water supply.
Okay, so we'll go forward after we get that, then. So let's look, I guess, at the wastewater side of it.
Now, we've got three in there that's being funded this year, amongst the generator, and then you've got Grove, Grandview, Phase One and Grove, Grandview, Phase Two, that are going to be funded this year. I personally don't have any problem with the generator.
Me either.
Well, I do have a question. How come you're going to fund the one for the water fund in whole this year and the wastewater fund only going to fund thirty thousand dollars out of half of? Is there a logic in that decision?
The generator, are you talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the reason is, the, it's not quite as critical for the lift station because what we have is a bypass system, which is not the same as standby power. So it's, so it's still a meter.
Well, the problem goes off to Wright Street, right?
No, they can...
Well, now, this is the one, generator, come here, it goes in, well, I guess hopefully.
Yeah, they have a problem with it if you move it off to Wright Street, the last water station, right?
But what happens, like, we have lost power. And like I said, we have, what we have is a portable pump, and we have an overfull wet well. So, you know, that gives us some time to deal with it relative to return. But that's not the same as standby power, you know, that's... So all I'm suggesting is, you know, it fits for that over a couple of reasons.
Is there any value in the old generators? I don't think there's any generator there, is there?
There's no generator there.
There isn't one there now, that's the... We've got one station that doesn't have it. We got one water pumping and one wastewater pumping station.
The picture is the picture of the one we have.
Correct, yeah.
If, if they showed you a picture of the other one, it'd just be a blank pad. Oh, well, that was, that's the one by my house, and I thought that would be replaced because, for some reason...
It's old and it might need replacing, but no.
Okay.
Actually, now that we're talking about generators, I recently applied for some, what is it, hazard mitigation money that's coming available, and it's through the state lease, basically. And so I had to call to find out, okay, where's the application? How do I apply? And what I was told by Lansing was that they don't, they wanted to talk to you before you fill out the application because the application's pretty lengthy and complicated, and they want to make sure that you wouldn't impact qualifying. So I was talking about it, and, and actually what I was applying for was the generator of Cox Street, or I would have applied. But anyway, in the course of the conversation, they said, they determined their standards are twenty-nine years for the life of the generator. And I'm sure that's based on...
About thirty, twenty-nine.
Yeah.
FEMA, that ultimately comes from FEMA. The money's coming through FEMA, through the state police. And I don't even know is where they come up with their estimates.
Twenty-nine years?
Yeah. But it's all going to depend on how often you have to use it. It's, you know, if it's a standby generator, that would be a standby, but I don't know.
Yes.
So it's, you know, other than your monthly testing or your, you know, your regular testing, it's not going to run unless you have a failure. So twenty-nine years might turn into...
Thirty-five.
Twenty-nine years or six months, who knows?
Well, they finish your last one.
But, but it's, you know, we, we have these generators all over. What's our oldest generator right now?
Well, the newest is going to be the wellhouse.
The newest is...
Ninety-one is the oldest.
Ninety-one, so...
The other listings?
Ninety-one's our oldest generator. The newest is the Center Street one, and then the newest one after that is the Wellfield Pump House, which is a huge generator.
We don't have one.
The one that we're putting with...
That's one.
Okay, that's right, there's no standby there, it's just the workstation.
I don't have a problem with the generator either, and I understand why it's, it's not as a crucial need as the, the water generator, because we, you can bypass pumping, you can get away with that.
I guess the two CIP items that I do have issue with is the Grove and Grandview, Phase One and Phase Two, which are going to be funded this year. And other than the fact that they're recommended by the study that was done in 2003, I'm curious why we are putting them out.
The Phase Two ones or both?
Phase One and Phase Two.
One and two.
Yeah. Phase One, I assume, is, is a means to get to Phase Two.
Right.
And that's going to be a low-pressure...
Right. Initially, that was, I was just calling that one project, and then I think just last year I split it up just for cost reasons.
Do I understand the low-pressure force meaning correctly in that everybody that hooks up to that has to have a grinder pump?
Right.
And you pump it out to the...
And that's primarily because of the terrain that we have, you know, the way our community's laid out, we're building valleys and rock.
I guess I'm, I'm wondering what drives the need for Grandview to have sewers. I just was out there the other day and I see a new house that just put in a new engineered septic system. And so they obviously are permitting those yet.
Well, yeah, they permitted it. If we, if we don't have a public system, then they get permitted. So everybody who's building calls and says, where are you getting sewers? And I've been telling them, next year, for quite a while, but it's not happening, so...
Now, these are, these would be on the same, but these on a contract basis, the individual property owners? So the sewer, how's it going to be installed and paid?
Well, they have, they have to pay installation, and they pay a lateral benefit charge for them to begin with. And the connection fee covers the cost of the grinder, but not installation.
Could you run over that one more time, Kirk?
Funding.
Funding?
Yeah. So the main and the lateral to the property line, engineering, construction, financing is, is paid for by lateral benefit charge, which is basically...
So it's charged to the property?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so what you're talking about, are you getting this under any state funding?
No.
Well, this is all, we're front funding it and then they're paying it back over time?
Yep.
The, the grinder pump, that's also paid for by the property owner, and then they turn it over to the township to maintain?
It's not paid for by the property owner, they pay a connection fee, which, that includes the grinder.
Covers a part of it.
Is their, is their connection fee any greater or less than somebody who doesn't need a grinder?
No.
So technically, somebody that doesn't need a grinder is actually paying for a part of the person that does?
Well, they're, they're paying for the whole system. It's a system charge, you know, they're going to make charge for it.
I, I guess I'm, I still don't see what's driving the need for the sewer in Grandview.
Well, you mentioned, you know, you and some of the newer homes are having to build engineer systems, okay? And it's surrounded, basically, by sewer. So right on the, you know, on Grandview Circle in particular, and the same thing on Vander Moon, South Vander Moon, the backyard, but up to the city of Marquette, you know, and they have sewer and water. Now, at least we've got water on our site, and that sewer on Vander Moon, now, we do not have it, you know, probably Grove to city limits.
I guess that's doesn't, so we're just doing it because of its proximity to our system? Not necessarily because they need it?
Well, they do need it. I mean, you know, everybody tells me they need it.
Who's everybody?
Everybody's been building out there. You get calls every year.
Well, the health department prefers that we not have septic systems that, you know, for these developments that employ in public, public sewer systems that pull us to the, to the septic systems. They're, you know, from a community standpoint, sanitary standpoint, they're, they're, they're championing municipal sewers as opposed to septic systems.
Why don't you think, David?
Why don't you think, David, that they don't need them?
If their septic system that they currently have is working, then I'm not sure what the, what the need that's being demonstrated is. I don't... I mean, are we just... They need them because municipal sewer is better than a septic system? I would argue that point. If it's because of the number of them in a given area, that's a separate issue. But I don't hear anybody saying that. I just, all I hear is that we want to do this project because of its proximity to the, the township sewer. Because there's going to always be somebody that's close. If we add on to Grandview, there's going to be somebody else that's right next door to it.
That's why, that's why we're doing it. It's no different than what we've been doing in Trowbridge Park. You know, we got grants for Trowbridge Park.
Well, Trowbridge Park...
But we never...
The latest stuff in Trowbridge Park is being done because they have failing systems. Do they have failing systems in Grandview? Or are there system, I don't, I don't hear about failing systems out there.
Mostly not any of the other systems. I don't know if the other ones do.
The more you put into an area, you're going to have...
I know the areas, the other areas we looked at, there have been failing systems.
What, what do you mean, what, the areas you've looked at?
Well, we looked at Trowbridge Park, where it was...
Well...
Burton Road.
Trowbridge Park's a separate issue. We're talking...
It's on Vandenboom.
We're talking Grandview. And if, I'm wondering, the reason, wonder the reason we want to move ahead of this project? Is it because the systems are failing? Is it because they want to do more development in Grandview, but they can't get permits for septic and sewer? Why we want to put, do this, this upgrade? What's driving it? And all I've heard so far is it's being driven by the fact that the, the, uh, study said that we need to do it out there, and that, uh, because they're really close to the municipal system, we need to get them hooked up.
I think in a progressive area, or a building area, they'd prefer to have septic, not, not to have septic. You know, because more, more houses you put in in the area, things...
And if Grandview was going in and starting a subdivision in there, I would say that would be a good time to put sewer in so that everybody hooks up to as they're going. What's the requirement for these people to hook up to the sewer after it goes through? Is everybody required?
Not with existing. Uh, they, there's an agreement that's signed to contract that when their, when their current system fails, uh, they're required to be connected to the public system.
So they could go on for, they could go on for thirty years and not hook up?
They could, possibly.
Or I think the other rest of that rule is if the property is sold, it has to be hooked up?
Correct. Changes hands, changes hands or fails. And it's basically, it's a modernization. It's, you know, the, the health, the county health department, state health departments are pushing people away from septic systems from an environmental health standpoint.
What's the average cost of, to install this, this system per household? Thirty thousand?
Just the installation part?
Well, they're all... You said there was lateral benefit? Grinder pump, the, the whole nine yards.
Yeah, whatever costs an average home.
Twelve, fifteen thousand.
No, it could be ten to fifteen thousand, total.
And what's the average cost of a septic system? If it's, if it's an engineered system, it's in the ten to fifteen thousand range. Cost is relatively the same. If it's not an engineered system, then it's not. Can they do it without an engineered system? It depends on how big their lot is.
No, they gotta get a permit from the health department. And if they say you gotta do it, you gotta do it.
The health department has criteria that they apply.
It's based on lot size?
So a composition, lot size, variety of things, density.
They do two things when they're determining if you need an engineered system or not. They do a PERC test and, and a lot size. And if it exceeds a certain size, then you have to do an engineered, or if it's less than a certain size, you have to do an engineered system, which is essentially above ground. You build a mound and pay five thousand dollars for engineering to have it done. And, and, uh, if it doesn't pass the PERC test, which I'm not sure what the soil is out there, I'm assuming it's something in...
It's fairly sandy.
Fairly sandy, so that it would probably pass the PERC test. It's just a matter of the lot size. And if those lots are of a certain size or bigger, then it's not a requirement. You can just put in a septic system. So if we put this system in, and then, and new construction, are they required then to hook up?
Yes.
Okay.
New construction, do you require...
When, when I take a drive out through there, I don't see a half a dozen lots that are developable, that are, they're still empty.
That, that could be true, yeah.
It's been on development the last... You got a couple of really large ones. I mean, there's one really large one with all the vacuum golfers. It could be a separate, it could be a separate subdivision. What have we got? One, two, three, four, five?
I went around through there and counted, counted the vacant lots that are not developed, and I didn't come up with maybe five.
Agreed. We've got sixteen in there, right? Well, the one big one though, the, the one that, uh, the big one that's on there is, if I remember right, close to fifteen or fifteen acres or so. One large one that wraps around the whole, the whole, what would it be, the east side? And then back around the golf course. So, I mean, that one could be developed. It's got some terrain challenges, but it could be developed into a number of separate home sites.
And then I don't see any road repair costs in this, uh, project cost, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. I don't see any road repair in there.
That's built in, isn't it? Isn't that built into that cost? And it wrote it in, it's taken up to be replaced?
It depends. I mean, we did get an estimate to do this project, and, uh, actually, now I've got, I have three estimates.
How large a main is this force main?
Uh, the largest would be two-inch.
Would this be in the roadway or outside the roadway? It'd be outside the roadway, because you still would have to do...
Outside, there's... On Phase One, there could be a crossing.
Okay, so I think we got the pro, we got the generator, I think, is okay for the wastewater. I think the art, the sticking point is the Grandview project, Grove, Grandview.
The problem I have with both of those, and what I'm getting around to, is we can spend a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, and then you put Grandview in there in Phase Two, and that's another how much?
One seventy-five.
One seventy-five, so we're looking at, uh, three hundred and ten thousand dollars. You can put those in there, and there's no requirement for anybody that's currently there to hook up until they sell the home or their system fails. We've had no, uh, system failures that we're aware of. So it becomes a matter of how long before you get that return back for the money that you invested. And then while you're doing that, the rest of the users in the township are paying for that, for that upgrade, for something that's essentially could go the next twenty years and not be used.
Well, there's other people that, that want sewer that don't happen. That would be people that are selling their homes, want to sell their homes.
Well, I guess, I guess what we're saying, Kirk, is, I mean, I know you're, it's want and need. I mean, I know you want it, but is it, I mean, just... I know Trowbridge Park in the northwest part wasn't really a need, because you did have issues with failing systems up there and such. But in the Grandview area, that's sort of, that's kind of a new area, right? Sort of? A lot of new construction.
There's some fairly old in there, too.
I, I guess I would...
I mean, this project is an emergency, let's put it this way. It's not an emergency project, correct?
No, I'm not saying it is an emergency project.
I, I would suggest that the capital improvements for, uh, Grandview be removed from the 2019 budget until we can better justify and document the need. I don't, the, the fact that, that the study recommends it, I think at this stage of the game, it's, what, fifteen, twenty years after the fact? And we haven't been, there's not a need demonstrated. I think this is a far cry from, from, uh, northwestern side of, uh, Trowbridge, where they actually had failing systems. You're talking a lot of money, and, you know, in the time that we're in, with the shortage that we have, I, I do have to concur with you, and I think this can be, this can be put off for, who knows how long?
Well, this is not a, this is not an SRF project.
I think it should be...
By sewer, sewer revolving fund. This is something we would be funding, uh...
From our residents, hey?
And if the residents in that area, same as they did with water, I remember the residents came to us with a petition for, for water, and then we went forward and did the process. They could do the same thing with sewer. If and when they start to have failing septic. Now, on Vandenboom, I, I'm not... Do we have any failing septic on the Grandview, that we're aware of? I know we, on Van, South Vandenboom, we did. We had people on South Vandenboom that had gone through the regular septic, all the way to engineered septic, which also failed, and they had really nothing other than they were being pumped every other week. So, you know, there were some very critical failures on South Vandenboom, uh, we went after there. But it's not the case here in Grandview. Basically, what we're looking at, Grandview is being somewhat proactive, but trustee Wiegand's absolutely right. It's not a, it's not a situation where we have multiple failing septic systems that we're aware of. Some of them can be fairly old, because some of the houses are fairly old. I remember that, if I'm remembering right, that subdivision was developed in the mid to late seventies, if I remember right. They started selling lots in there. So you've got houses that have been there for twenty-five years, which is essentially the lifespan of a septic system. So you could have failed septic there now that are not evident yet. If you've ever been involved in a failed septic system, just one day it doesn't work. Uh, you have not a whole lot of warning coming up. So if that situation occurs, um, we can respond to that. But I, I guess what I'm saying is, is if you want to defer this appeal, uh, desire to defer to some later point in time, that's, it's not a critical need at the moment.
I would like, like to see us remove both of these CIP requests from 2019 funding, and hopefully in 2020, uh, we can come back with a little better... If we want to come back with it at all, we can come back with a little better documentation on exactly why we're doing it. The other question I got on it is, a year ago, we beat this fifty-year expected life to death, and I see it's still on the CIP request. Which is frustrating and pissed.
So what number do you want to use?
That's not up to me. If I was the guy running public works, I'd know.
Probably within fifty years, but we don't know.
Well, we went out, I went and did all that research on ductile iron, and, and, uh, they say that's good for up to a hundred and seven years.
Depending on soil.
Depending on the soil type, but we don't know what the soil type is. Um, I question why we're still using ductile iron as opposed to, uh, plastic. And I understand that there's, there's a concern with the plastic, that you can't thaw it out if it freezes, but the research I've done since then says that you can. It's a matter of whether you lay a copper wire in there with it or not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, we are, we are under pressure from the health department to move from septic to...
Municipal.
Municipal systems.
And I, I do have another question that maybe, Kirk, you can look up and, and give me a, a better answer on is, is, uh, we have them put in, and we service all of these grinder pumps. If you have, and the only thing that, that's going to fail in a septic system is the field. And the septic sys, the field gets debris in it and plugs it up, and it requires a new field. The septic tank doesn't fail. Why, instead of putting a... Pardon?
Generally not. Some of the, some of the septic systems that we have are fifty-five gallon drums.
Well, it's a concrete.
Or time-hold.
But why, why can't... They have septic systems today that have an additional tank strapped to them, or you can put a separate tank on it and where the liquid drains into, and then you have an effluent pump, which is basically a horse and a half sump pump that pumps it into the same two-inch line you're talking about. Why can't the homeowners do that as opposed to, and why is that not better for the township as opposed to having grinder pumps? If they had an effluent pump in there, which is a smaller pump, it's a homeowner's maintenance item. It's up to him to fix it and keep it in shape. If we have grinder pumps in there, we've got a whole corner of the shop set up over there to repair grinder pumps, and we replace grinder pumps, and last count, there were some four hundred out there that were, that we're working on. I'm not sure why we need to add anymore. Is there a reason they can't use an effluent pump to pump into a low-pressure main?
Well, that, that is possible, but that's, that's a different system. But, but essentially, the main's going to be the same.
Right.
You know? And another thing is not, our pumps, you know, are not effluent pumps.
I know.
Okay, so we need to pump varying distances over varying terrain changes, okay?
I understand.
So your effluent pump is just going to get it out normally to the, to the tank, right? Or to your drain bill or whatever. So what I'm saying is...
No, the effluent pump could. What I'm suggesting is the effluent pump could be used to pump it into the system.
But then it wouldn't...
Right, but would it be, that's what I'm saying, it wouldn't be the same as our pumps. It's only designed to pump, like I said...
Liquid.
Right. To a few feet.
Yep.
It's not designed to pump up.
It'll go as far as you want to send it.
Other than horsepower?
Yeah, horsepower.
You know, you go from half a power to half...
I'm just, I'm, and I don't want to belabor this issue now, because we're not working on that. I'm just wondering why we don't look at something like that, so that we can get out of the grinder pump repair business, or ten years from now, we're not looking at a thousand of them. There must be a way to, and I don't understand why we don't have that approach for the, the homeowners that they can use an effluent pump.
Well, I guess that that would be something that could be done, but it would have to be a heavier-duty pump, because the pump, the grinder pump itself pressurizes the system to move it through the system. And that's what pressurizes the whole sewer system, is the grinder pump. But a small effluent pump's not going to generate enough. It's going to get it out to the main, but then it sits in the main. You know, it's not powerful.
Well, it sets in the main anyway. Even the grinder pump, it sets in the main.
Well, the whole system is pressurized by the volume of the grinder pump, so it keeps it moving, basically. It doesn't just necessarily sit there. So why do we have lift stations, you know, to move it to higher elevations and lower elevations? But the grinder pumps themselves push it.
I'll argue that point. We, the grinder pump just pushes it uphill or downhill, whatever direction it has to go.
Right.
The lift station is a gravity feed system, correct?
If we went with...
Actually, the, the, I think the bigger difference is, the grinder pump is actually that. It's a grinder and a pump, and basically turns solids into liquids, for the most part. You know, there's some solids that it doesn't, and that's mostly what we have with failures, is that it's not just that the pump itself wears out, it's that something gets into the system that jams the pump, basically. It burns the, burns the motor out, so we have to rebuild it. But that's, that's the bigger, bigger thing, is it not only, um, pre-treats the waste of, or if that pre-treats the waste, but pressurizes the system as well, because of the size of the pump that it is.
I understand that, but an effluent pump, you'd have only liquids, period.
True. What do you do with solids?
Okay.
Solids, the solids stay in the septic tank?
I think we need more information.
I'm going to cut this conversation off, because this is...
But then you've got septic tanks at every house again in the public system.
I'm getting the timeout here. I get the timeout. We're cutting this conversation off because it's getting way off our base of... The CIP, what we need to do, so, uh, the CIP for wastewater, the generator was not a problem, a consensus of the board. But it sounds to me the consensus of the board wants to remove the Grove, Grandview projects, Phase One and Phase Two, from 2019 funding. Is that...
To some future point.
To some future point. Is that correct, or no?
Right, yeah.
So, looks like, Kirk, if you can go in and, uh, redo the wastewater budget minus the Grove, Grandview, Phase One and Phase Two for 2019. The wastewater, uh, thirty thousand dollars doesn't look like it's a problem.
And so if I, I've got this right, well, the only thing we're going to consider at the board meeting for CIP request approval is the generators and the wastewater, and the water, and then the PLC upgrade and update.
And you're going to get more documentation on the motor control?
Run that by me again. I've got to make sure I got it.
Wastewater, you got, number one.
Number one, the, the CIPs we're considering for approval at the next board meeting is number one under wastewater, which is the ATS, uh, generator. And then underwater fund, it's the ATS generator, which is the number four that's got in front of it. And five is the PLC update and upgrade, and we're waiting for some more information on the motor control center.
So under wastewater, we're just doing the generator?
Correct.
Okay, well, for nineteen?
For 2019.
The others were, didn't start till twenty, twenty-one?
And I, I guess I would hope that we would just go after the other ones and start considering them after budget's over.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, so I guess, but I do believe that I think we have a progressive area that we want to promote. We should consider Sodewer and Water. Because it sells more property that way than it does here.
Well, if we're promoting, we can get some revenue back from it.
Exactly.
Well, I, I think the bigger thing is, you know, we've got, we're a growing community. And a growing community relies more on municipal services rather than individual septic and individual wells. You know, from the standpoint of reliability and expectation from the residents. You know, they're going to make sure that when they turn the faucet on, they have water. And when they flush the toilet, it goes away. It stays away, doesn't come back. Not the same cost as installing. Yeah.
Oh, that's funny.
I mean, so we've got, we figured out what we wanted for the CIP, consensus of who's here. Question I have now is, do you want to go into, because it looks to me most, you know, other than the more documentation on the motor control center, the other CIPs were okay by consensus to be funded. So the water fund, there isn't much change there. So I, I don't know if you want to spend the next half hour to look at that and.
I have some questions on the water.
As, as do I.
Okay, so I guess we'll turn it over to Kirk. We'll move forward on the water budget.
Yeah, realizing some of these numbers are going to change.
Correct.
Well, that, understand that.
I just have some, some questions on the narrative.
Yeah, same, same here.
Well, the narratives, so what's, so we'll start with trustee Wiegand. What is your questions on the narrative?
642 sales, I'm wondering what we need.
Six, 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 six.
It's on the bottom, it says, use charges to customers uses declining. Current volume rate is 866, recommending increased 876. The last production report we got showed a 30% increase in water. How's water declining that?
But that's for one month.
No, that, no, that's for the, for the year.
If that, if those correct me if I was wrong, it was only for one month.
Yeah, it was just for that month this year, it was for the month of July.
Just for one month.
When you do an average for everything that was reported, which I think was through August or September, the average increase is 30%. If you threw out the July increase, that was 196%. And, and just threw that out as being unreliable, which, I don't know if it was or not, you still get a 13 or 12 and a half percent increase for the year to date. So it was, it was for the year to date, it wasn't just one month.
Okay, I think what the difference, what the difference is, you're looking at gross figures versus actual utility. And basically the figure that you're seeing from, from 17 to 18 has additional construction added into it for more users. But the individual use is still on a decline. So you've got more people in 18 than you had in 19, more users. But on average, the individual level of use is still declining based upon improved facilities and use changes, basically. Coupled with July being a very dry month, so we sold a lot more water July for long watering and everything else. But I think that's one of the things that, you know, needs to be taken into consideration from year to year. You're seeing the natural growth, basically of expansion of either residents or businesses in the township using water. But overall, the trend is still on an individual basis declining, using less water.
It would be, it would be nice to see that information because from my argument, if, if the existing system is selling more water, it doesn't matter if it's more customers or not. If it's selling more water, then our costs should at least remain stagnant. They shouldn't have to go up because it's the same system that we used in 2017 or 2018.
Well, that's true, but it's people are replacing toilets and things like, they're replacing them with lower volume use items. So I mean, that's, that's what we're saying is, and we can chart it basically for a longer period of time if you, if you want, on an individual basis, but that's, you know, that's, that's what's happening is we're seeing, not just here, but in other places. We're seeing a decline in actual use. And that's why you're seeing costs going up, you know, some pretty exorbitant ones. Neighbors are 25, 35, 50% going up because the cost of infrastructure is the same with less use.
And the other question was the base water rate, does it still recommend that it go up a dollar a month?
Yes.
And I'm wondering if, if that's administration, customer accounts and maintenance looks like. I'm not sure what's driving it.
Well, it's just the, the need for revenue to cover the expenses. So it set up, you know, an increase in, in the rate. It's been very stagnant for a long time, the base, the base term.
What portion of this, whether it be the volume rate water or base water rate, is driven by the CIP request?
Well, well, yeah. Fig's in gold. I mean, if I take some of this stuff out of the CIP, that would have some kickback for sure.
Yeah, it's going to reduce that. If one of the numbers is going to reduce, it won't change with the CIP. Probably both of those numbers will reduce based on the CIP being made.
And then my last question, Flotter, is the debt service water. We had all this breakdown on the 2018 build, which was all lumped into land purchase at 291, but the bottom line is stays $15 a month. But we got rid of hard low.
Right, well, as I discussed at our prior pseudo work session, it was my impression based on what I heard you say that you're, you want to pay the debt. And what I'm suggesting is, the best way to do that is to leave the debt service the same. Look at, as we pay the debt down, you know, if, because we really need to pay more down.
What you're lacking is what's it going to go to, right?
Yeah, when you're, when you collect a dollar and 71 cents that used to be collected for hard low and you collect that every month, what are we doing with it? Is it going to something in particular or is it just going to sit there or, and I guess.
Well, yeah, I, well, I'm recommending that it go towards that land purchase. But that's, you know, when I brought that up and supervisor said, well, the board has to make that decision. So I guess the board can make that decision.
And I suspect that's going to be coming to the board. That's part of this discussion, basically. I had a similar discussion with the supervisor, basically in terms of what I would recommend or how I would recommend that that extra money be, be allocated. We have some of these, as for instance Kirk mentioned, the land. We've only got two more payments scheduled, two more annual payments that's scheduled to be paid off in 2020. So that could be something we could pay off now and save $2,000 in interest. You know, so that's what I had suggested, that we take two of these, the two that are closer to being paid off, get them off, get rid of the interest payments that are being paid.
Yeah.
And allocate that extra, you know, the excess of that $15.
Well, I see the 2017 DWRF is on 2018, but it's not on 2019, is that gone also?
Which is that number?
The 2017 DWRF.
Yes, that's going. That's going, yeah.
Going or gone, gone in 18?
I think that went, 18 is the last payment on that, isn't it, Lois? I believe that's the last payment. I don't have any.
No, that was a project in 2017.
It was the Hargill family that was the last.
The Hargill was paid off.
Hargill was paid off and then we shelved the, the water project. So there's not, nothing more on that. That one, but the land, the 40 acre purchase is due to be paid off in 2020, payment and interest. And then in 2025, the two and a quarter DWRF one, the first one is paid off. But if we can pay that off faster, there's a lot of interest to be saved there.
I, I understand that, a little narrative would have gone a long ways towards clarifying that. And I just raised another question. We've been collecting money for a 2017 DWRF that never happened. Where'd all the money go that we've been collecting for this?
That was spent, most of it was spent on the engineering that kept being done over and over and over again for upgrades. But every, every time we had to update, it cost money. Until ultimately the board decided to end the project, to shelter.
So that, all that money that's collected has been spent or is it not sitting there waiting for anything else?
There may be some left in there, 15,000.
It stays in that restricted fund.
Yeah, so.
But it's a restricted fund, we're not doing anything with it.
Correct.
Paid the debt down.
Yeah, it's action, it's action of the board to, to deal with that.
I mean, wouldn't it make sense if you're, if you're going to take the 50 cents and the 70 cents and the dollar and 71 cents, and we're going to lump it all together and put it under land purchase? So we pay it off sooner, wouldn't it make sense to take any balances left under the 2017 DWRF and put it towards that same land purchase payoff?
It could, but that's not a staff decision. That's, that's a board decision.
So that'll be a board item coming up.
Yeah, the board put it in a restricted fund, so the board has to take it out of the restricted, restricted fund and apply it where you would still apply it.
Those are my questions on water.
Okay, Treasurer Johnson, what is?
I guess, you know, and again, you know, we had, we've had this conversation with supervisor. I thought it was going to come up at this meeting about where do you, where do you want to go with that $15? Where do you, how will you want to allocate that? But we hope that at our next session Friday, we might be able to address that so we can start doing that and get the principal paid down and reduce some of the interest.
So Treasurer Johnson, what is your questions on water?
I'm going back to the monthly base rate, going up a dollar in that. And the question I have, why? Because there's no, no definition and no justification for it at all. Because you're talking about a little over $14,000 you're going to be generating every month in that on that.
You know, and again, and again, what this is, is this is responsive to the ordinance that the board adopted. Basically what it amounts to, the old ordinance, basically what it amounts to, it says that the expenses of the system shall be paid by the users. And prior board has made the decision on how they wanted to see that allocated. They want so much of it to go to the base rate and they want so much to be in rates. And that's what Kirk is applying. The way he's saying is, is to meet that criteria that prior board set and is still in place. That's how he has to allocate it. He calculates what the cost of operating the system is anticipated for 2019, divides it out for a portion of it being paid out of the, the volume rate and a portion being paid out of the base rate. And based on what was in the budget at, as it currently sits, which has been modified. So those numbers are going to change. When we pull out, pull out those, those CIP projects that are not going to be funded in 19, these figures, those two figures will change, they'll go down. But that's how he does that calculation. And, you know, and again, the board has the ability to alter that and decide how much you want paid out of the volume rate and how much you want paid out of a base rate, or all out of volume or all out of base.
I think that what you're saying is true. The problem is, we're going through the budget and we're looking at this.
Right.
We have nothing to justify it.
Yeah.
To either yes or no it all the way down the line. So these are the things that I'm coming up with in that.
And again, it's, it's a simple calculation. And that's, you know, it's predicated upon that formulation that's been established that we've been following for a number of years in terms of calculating how much is volume rate and how much is base rate. Or it could all be in the volume rate. It doesn't need to be a base rate.
Well, I can interject here, the, the base rate is your guaranteed revenue. I mean, that doesn't fluctuate at all because that's, you're collecting that every month. Your, your water rate, volume rate goes like this.
Up and down. Because it's predicated on use.
Correct, so this is the only, really the only charge that we have a guarantee of funding from.
Granted, it, it doesn't take more than four or five sentences to justify that. And you don't have any questions anymore.
And that can be, that can be built into the narrative, you know, each year it can be built into the narrative, calculated by X, you know, here's how it was calculated. But, you know, I think it's a key point that clerk Rotary brought up is that with the enterprise funds, you do have to have some form of guaranteed revenue to ensure that you're covering the base cost of the operation. And that's that.
You don't have a problem with that. I don't, I don't have a problem with it, just that I'm looking here. And someone asked a question, I have no way of justifying it.
I understand, and you folks, most of you, were not on the board that made that decision the last time. It was supervisor Neiman that was the supervisor last time. Well, you know, some of you weren't, not all of you were, were on the board at the time. And there was a great deal of discussion about that. And on the commercial side, a tremendous amount of discussion on meter size versus, you know, different ways of calculating. And, and that was a formal board discussion and decision on how you wanted to see that calculated.
That base rate changes depending on meter size, right?
Does. Commercial side, yes.
Equivalent meter size.
Equivalent meters, the factors we use. That's basically making it equivalent to residential use.
I, I would hope that after the budget season is over, we revisit that because it makes more sense to me to have fixed costs in the base rate and the rest of the costs that fluctuate based on usage into the per gallon rate.
And, and, and that is certainly part of that discussion. And that has been discussed time and time again. And I think that's a very valuable, valuable comment because I think what needs to happen from the standpoint of, of board education and board and staff understanding of intention is to have those kinds of discussions in kind of an open forum type of a basis, you know? Tell me how you, tell me how you calculate your budget figures, Mr. Public Works Superintendent. And then you have a general discussion about it. So there's an understanding and potentially an agreement for the 2020 budget on how it's going to be calculated.
Well, I would think that the per gallon rate would be based on a, a five-year trend study and be set for three years at a time instead of sending it every year.
Well, that sounds familiar.
We actually have a grid set up for.
That's, we have to do.
Well, I'll give you a little history lesson here because the board back in 20, it was back in the 2000s, decided to go away from the, it was at the base rate and go to the volume rate strictly. And that caused massive chaos. We had 100 people in the room because.
One dollar.
Yeah, it was, well, and it wasn't proportionate to user. It was all over because it depended on what your use was, how much it went up. And there's people that it went up a lot, a lot, their money went up quite a bit with the high volume usage. We, we discontinued that like a month or two after it happened. So I, I would recommend not going that road.
Well, you have very, you have very, you have very differing segments of your, in your population with three yard water use. You have some segments that use very little water, who, who want everything based on the volume rate. And you have others that use large volumes of water, whether it's large yards that they water, gardens or pools that they fill or whatever, who want base rate. They don't want it based on volume, you know? So, you know, some communities have developed tiered types of, types of systems. And we've kind of not gone in that direction, have avoided that direction. But as clerk Rotary mentioned, that, that change that was made that one year resulted in the difference of $1. $1, and it filled the room with folks on positive side and negative side. And that's when the board, I believe it was supervisor at a meeting in place at that time. And that's when the board went back to, we're splitting it, we're going to cover part of it with volume rates and we're going to cover part of it with a fixed base rate. And it's been that way ever since.
And, and the fairness was, and this was my opinion, the fairness was an issue too. Because if someone went to Florida for the winter and didn't use any water, the system's still there servicing them. They're, they're not paying a base fee, so they're not really, they're taking advantage of the system, in my opinion.
They're not paying the volume fee, but they're paying the base fee.
So, I mean, so the fairness of the system was to have everyone pay the base fee. So it was a shared cost, then, you know, and then the volume was the, was the major, major thing. Because, and that's when Ed Kettle was here, that was my argument with him. And he could not, he could not overcome that argument.
Well, Ed, Ed's posture was everything should be based on volume.
Yes, and he could not org.
All your water costs should be predicated on volume because he used a seemingly small volume of water a month.
And I do.
They shouldn't fund the system.
And I do too, I don't use, I use less than 1,000 gallons. But the thing is, is in the fairness of everything, it's not fair to have, you know, like I said, if I go to Florida for the winter, I'm not paying anything for the system. That's not fair.
But your system is still there.
It's still there. It's still there, and it's available.
And it's function, thousand gallons, so...
I have a couple, a couple more.
Yes, sir.
Just looking for information more than anything, on five seventy-three, the hydrants, and really, five seventy-two bolt, it just says the expenses, I'm trying to figure out, five seventy-three on hydrants? Do we have a breakdown as to what the actual cost in maintaining a hydrant is? Because I'm looking for some kind of graphs, is it going up and down on a monthly or yearly basis and that over a given time and that, and where we're at? Same with the distribution and transmission?
The hydrants, the hydrants do vary, they fluctuate.
That, that's fine, looking at a trend. Okay, I'm trying, I'm trying to get a trend, see where we're going.
Well, and there's, there's a little more to that trend, because in some cases, hydrant maintenance is being done by building and ground staff at some time too, you know, because I have, I have my guys in summertime assist fire department and public works in terms of maintaining, exercising valves, not so much exercising valves, but maintaining, cutting the grass around them, painting them, you know, those kinds of things, and leave the exercising of the valves and the inspections to public works and fire, for both, the fire does flushing, you know, and public works does the actual physical repairs, for the most part, I think almost universally, you got to repair it, just on the hydrants.
Yeah, but that's basically what it is, it's not the, the maintenance costs.
But I'm just trying to get some, some kind of trend as to what these costs are.
And we're working on that, your asset, the asset allocation plan that we're working on, will give you some of that information along with the GIS data that we're plugging in, but as of right now, it's not completed, we're still putting data in.
Because it's hard looking at, okay, you have expenses here, but what are the expenses at, how do they fluctuate, are they going up? Hydrants have been here for what, thirty, forty, fifty years?
Yeah, some, some.
So, it gets to the point where you have to start looking at that, when you have these trends and you have graphs, you can start seeing these things, and you gotta start looking at dollars allocated. And we had talked on repairing and maintenance, on the five seventy-eight general services, nine thirty on vehicles, we had talked about software we're supposed to have for a history of each vehicle and that, as to, so that we know at what point in time it's costing us money to maintain it, to keep that vehicle.
We did, we put that system in about, what, two and a half, three years ago now?
We put it in, but I've never seen anything come out of it at all.
We've got, we've got all the records of it, but, yeah, that's not, that's something that we use internally, but we hadn't been providing that to the board.
Because that was something I asked for a number of years ago, and that.
What's there?
Are you thinking of something like the fire department when they have the, the truck numbers and all of this stuff, for any good, bad, leaking? But when you look at cost factor for a vehicle, you're looking at what's going into that, your gas, oil, tires, everything else to go along with it, so you know if it's costing us to keep that vehicle on the road, or we have to get a new one, is it cheaper to get a new one than to keep fixing what we have?
You're not looking at the individual costs or what they're doing, you're looking at the overall cost for the year of what they spent on that truck to maintain.
Right, right, and somehow, give us some idea, yeah, we, we do not wanna put any more money into that vehicle, it's costing us money now, let's, let's bite the bullet and get a new one and be done with it, and that too, so...
Yeah, we're watching it, by and large, we run until tires go square, you know, and then replace them, I think we just replaced our last bad one not too long ago, but, yeah, I mean, they're, they're on, they're on a life cycle, and we're on the network fleet system that, you know, tells it gives us mileage, it gives us gas mileage, it gives us, you know, maintenance intervals and all, we've got all those records, it's all computerized.
And we should, we should know that the minute we're buying more gas for that vehicle, there's something wrong, when they get it fixed or replaced.
One of the corners, basically, of maintenance exceeding value, yeah.
Okay, any, any, we ask some more questions, Eric, or...
No, I...
On that water fund, we're on water.
He took care of most of my questions, I'm following him.
Okay, any more questions on the water fund? Okay.
I'll just make a quick comment, I mean, you can see right here, the gas fuel costs are going down, and the repair maintenance costs are rising. We've got three years right there.
Okay, so, we decided, so we did, supervisor Durant is here now, and we did have a good discussion about our CIP projects for the water, just to do a quick recap, we talked about...
Shouldn't we just make her listen to the tape, you know, she was late?
I'll do a quick recap. We talked about CIP projects for water, and for the most part, we agreed on all of them, we need more documentation on the motor control system. And we talked about wastewater, we were fine with the generator, but we are striking from two thousand nineteen Grand View Phase One and Phase Two.
Differing?
We're deferring that to a later date. And we just moved on to the water, and there was a couple questions about the volume rate and the base rate, and then treasurer Johnson had some questions, I think you were here when, so that's where we're at, and I think that's a good stopping point.
So, we'll be working wastewater then on Friday?
Correct.
Well, I'll go bring you back the motor control information.
But I think the wastewater budget shall change with the deletion of two CIP items.
Both, both will change, water and wastewater.
So, if we can, if we can get those updated, we don't have to redo the books, just get us those sheets, and we can replace them in our binder, and then I think we'll go Friday at one o'clock then.
Copy that.
You say that now.
Okay, any other public comment, public comment? I don't have any announcements, anyone else have any announcements? I will adjourn this at two forty-two PM.
I have quite a few questions on wastewater, but I'll wait until Dave gets through. Got a lot of highlights, I got a lot of questions.